Good evening, everyone. It's now 6:00 PM at the September 3rd. City Council meeting will come to order because the audio visual is not working at the moment. We're going to take a five-minute break and we'll resume at 6:05 PM. Okay, we'll just start right over again. Good evening, everyone. It's now 6:00 PM and, well, it's actually about 6:10 PM. And the September 3rd City Council meeting will come to order. Let's begin with the invocation. Please join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, we've come together this evening with grateful hearts for the chance to serve our community. As we work towards setting the military rate and begin our budget hearings, we ask for your wisdom and guidance to help us to listen with open minds, to act with fairness, and to keep the needs of all our citizens at the center of our work. Grant us clarity in our discussions, unity in our purpose, and strength to make decisions that will bless this city today and in the years ahead, watch over our community, our families, and all who call this city home. Amen. Now, please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands by our nation, by their God, and by his rule. Hi, Kathy. Would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Frank Baker.
Present.
Councilmember Kimberly Shaw Elliott.
Present.
Councilmember Todd Harper.
Present.
Councilmember Jody Shirley.
Here.
Councilmember Anders Williams.
Present.
Vice Mayor Lloyd Roberts. Mayor Dave Gaddis.
Here.
City Manager Kyle Reifler.
Here.
And City Attorney Zoe Rawls.
Here.
All right, thank you very much. Were we expecting Vice Mayor Roberts to be here remotely or no? Okay, all right. Our first order of business tonight is approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda? Motion is made by Frank Baker. Do I have a second? Second. I'm going to give that one to Todd Harper. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the agenda is approved. Next, we are supposed to have presentations from the Pinellas County Sheriff's Office, but I would expect that since his schedule is off, he's not here. Mr. Reifler, do you have any information?
Yeah, we did request that the sergeant. I do not know why there's no subject. I did send a text requesting they can get one, but I can present the code report and the highlights of their law enforcement report if you'd like. I did. So, let's see, for the month of July 2025, grand total in the month, they had two or four assaults, two burglies, four larcenies, and one murder vehicle theft, nothing, no major sex offenses, murders, robberies this month. So, that's a good thing. And they had a total of 10 people arrested in the month of July, and as you can see in the report, they listed why. And they had a total of 764 events in the month of July, with 862 units responding to those reports. And it was like one crash, and it was an accident overrun in the city. And now, the citation, we had 212 citations warrants given out in the city in the month of July. And then for the code enforcement report, Deputy Trump, he started with a very active.
Sorry, Mr. Reifler, can you all one second? Will everybody mute your mics for just a minute? Let's see if we can figure this out.
Wasn't touching.
Yeah.
Oh, it's taped.
Oh, no, this is a marker. Maybe we can switch.
So, it's moving down?
Yeah, it's moving down here.
So, what happens when you're the last one in and you get the back of my?
Rewire about four of these. So, Deputy Trump for code enforcement had a very active beginning of the month, and as you're aware, he had an unfortunate accident. But there was some good news that he should be able to return to within either this end of this week or next week.
Good.
That kind of worked out favorably after getting some unexpected accident. So, he, of the, in the month of July, he did, or sorry, in the month of August, he did 55 case entries that he either made notes or created new cases for. And then for the, for the month, it looks like he spread it out pretty well this month with over 10 different code violations that he opened due. And then I ran a report just for the year-to-date, which is page 33 of the PDF document, and that, you know, lays out everything he's done in 2025. So, you know, it's a pretty good focus. You've been across the board. And I think with, you know, our new system using this database, it's allowing us to compile a lot more information and put all the facts of each case all in one spot. So, we're enjoying using it.
Would you say that the new reporting system is making it easier for Deputy Trump to manage?
I think he enjoys it. We can ask him at the next meeting. But from what I've heard in his feedback, he enjoys having a lot of access to it and helping to share information across.
Good, good. All right. Counsel, any questions or comments for City Manager Reifler concerning the code enforcement and police reports?
I think DMC without pre-stripping the intersection today, so was that a particular purpose? Was it just a review?
So, I was made aware, I taught law firm in the county, he does the traffic duty, that they were going to want modifications. So, he did something up there. From what I saw today, it didn't look like exactly what they were going to do. And I'm not sure if that's the final product, but I need to do a little more research on what they did and ask them about it. And it should have been the county staff.
I think people stood.
That's what I'm saying. There were four or five Deputy Trumps.
Counselmember Harper, did you drive through it on the way here this evening?
I did not.
Okay. Did anyone else?
I did.
You did, and what did you think?
I thought they were just re-stripping what was there and was disappointed to see it.
Did you come from the north driving into Beller Beach?
I went both directions, and the morning they had barriers that happened later, it's like they just were striking and asking to tour north and back.
Okay, all right. I can, on public record, say I'm very disappointed in the configuration. I think that they've created more of a hazard than, they've taken a problem and made it more problematic. But that's my opinion, and we'll see how it washes out.
Hey, Dave, can I have, I didn't pay attention to the striping or anything. I was more intrigued with the fact they were cleaning out the storm so early this morning. They had the roads blocked up. They did a horrible job of traffic control. They still allowed both lanes to make the left coming south of the Gulfport onto Hawes Lane. And then when the two cars got there, they couldn't go anywhere because they blocked off the road. You know, they showed lots of back there. So, there were some complications with that. But I was happy to see they were cleaning that storm so it clearly needed it. So, but I didn't pay any comment on this.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you very much. Any other questions or comments for the City Manager on this topic? All right, now we're on to item three, which is presentation from Chief Ken Grimes. He is not here this evening either, so we will just move right along. All right, we are on to the City Attorney Report. Everyone, the Zoe Rawls.
Good evening, everybody. Yes, I'm Zoe Rawls. I'm here on behalf of Mr. Tom Trask tonight. He sends for his regrets, but thank you all for having me, and I do not have anything to report. Who's that?
All right. Any questions or comments for City Attorney Zoe Rawls?
No.
All right. Now, we're on to the City Manager Report. Mr. Reifler, take it away.
Thank you, ma'am. So, I updated where we're at on the IRFAM recoveries for the CSD determinations. We are down to four code violation notices that I'm waiting on. I have one item to the United Kingdom, which I think they'll see where it's at exactly. It takes quite a bit of time to get over there. One was delivered and I'm waiting for the time I granted to expire. And then we heard back, and one of them that was returned to sender that we also posted on the door, that the owner has something, a little condition going on, and he plans to do a repair permit, and he believes it'll take less than a month. We're getting through these. I'm not sure what we're going to do about the other one that was returned to sender. I'll probably do some more internet searches to see if I can find something related to the address. And then the plan after that is going to be to circle around some of the, I got six that said they were planning to do their repair permits. I still have not heard. So, I may have to go and co-value some of those just to kind of get things moving forward. Okay, for Pinellas, as we mentioned previously, they extended it one more year for reimbursement. We met with Duke. It was the week before last. We did not get a start date. Where underwriting consultants left it, they believe that they're going to do their Phase Two kind of work after October 1. And the hope is that Duke starts on Phase 1 this year. That's where we left it. So, our next meeting will probably be, it'll be next Wednesday, and we'll try and answer some of the next start. And as far as the valves, we've made some progress. I was working with the Harvard contract crew last week and the prior week, and we do have the valves installed at 9th Street, 12th Street, and 13th Street. We did some work at 4th Street, could not get the plastic completely out of the pipe level of the water. So, we're going to get another attempt at that one next week when we get some lower tides. We're looking at negative point two at low low next week. So, it may be enough to get in there. We're going to attempt. And then the ones that we installed originally on 9th, 12th, and 13th, at 12th and 9th, we witnessed that there was still some infiltration in the water that passed the valve. I found some materials that, some hydroxyl that were actually set underneath the water and I did some patching, and I believe I made improvements on both those streets. But we did some measurements last week. This week, we had, last week we had about 2.5 high tides, and this week we're going to be at over three. So, it'll be very visible if there is backflow. So, it'll be a good test. So, I'll be doing the measurements and then hopefully providing more seals so that the backflow is further prevented. And then we'll wait for a really good negative point eight, negative point nine tide. Usually comes in the winter period where we can like get those, all falls exposed, but that dog's been all the way around. And then we have a meeting tomorrow at 10:00 to discuss what we've seen done at 18th Street. That was part of the project that we knew there was some sort of offset obstruction to get outfall, preventing a valve from being able to go in. So, we are meeting with the contractor for them to present what they proposed to repair that section of pipe and install that valve for us. Then that leaves us with waiting for that final valve that is being shipped for the swell, and that is still expected the first week of November. And thankfully, we have some load points that first week of November, so it kind of chimes out correctly to get that in. We are, we did not have a meeting for planning and zoning in the month of August, but we do have members re-conveending September 23 at 10:00. And hopefully, we'll be able to get through the rest of our review of our code chapters to make recommendations to City Council. And 9th Street pump station, we extended that bid. It is due currently this Friday at 2:00. We had some more questions come in yesterday and today about electrical, and we feel important. So, I'm planning on doing another agenda and extending the date until Wednesday next week to still provide enough time to do those questions to answer. I just, we have interested contractors that I just don't want to deter anyone from considering a responsible bid. Then we're planning the date we've selected with Parker Recreation Board is going to be October 25th, the 75th celebration event. And right now, we're planning, you know, food, drinks, and DJ, and also designing some T-shirts for remembrance. And Rippin Bus is getting those ordered for the event. So, a meeting monthly to plan that, and looking forward to having a nice little party on the 25th, which is Saturday. And our hours right now are 5:00 to 8:00 PM for the event. And then lastly, discussed in our work session, we are going to have an open, public discussion about the possibility of a temporary fire station in Beller Beach. And we're going to invite all Beller Beach residents who are interested in this and the Pinellas Sanco's Fire Rescue District, and the city officials here representing.
All right, thank you very much. Let me ask you a question about that right quick, and then I'll go to the council. Did I see an email come out today or yesterday from Chief Grimes that they're having another meeting? Do you know the source about?
Was it about specifically anything to do with temporary fire station? It was a, I think it was a summit of the cities that they serve along with the Pinellas Sanco's. Just communication. They were going to make a public meeting, and the line of us posted on our website encouraged many officials to attend because it will be a public meeting, so things discussed will be recorded.
All right. Counsel, any questions or comments for City Manager Reifler?
Yes, I'm Charlie. Kyle, just a quick clarification on the Berkey and Perry section. The numbers of the determinants here are 34, which is significantly down. So, the original numbers were the high 40. So, have those applications been withdrawn? Have they been reevaluated, or what happened to the other 16?
Most of them have been reevaluated for repair and I expect at least maybe one more of the ones that haven't arrived, or two more that arrived, but one with health issue. And then the six that said to plan to reevaluate to be repaired permits. Now, I think that the other ones that were either dabbled on, they said they were going to rebuild. The ones that were substantially damaged wanted to stay that way and applied to elevate Florida, I think their intention is to still allocate, but some of them are kind of hanging in there, seeing where that money goes. So, I have a really kind of full determination on what I expect.
Kyle, I was actually pleased to see that the number had dropped significantly. So, that's why I asked the questions. It's good news for some people.
I can go on.
Yes.
I, you mentioned elevate Florida. Do you have a sense for what criteria? Do you have a sense for what criteria Elevate Florida used to make their grants?
I have a lot of information. My email has been provided. I have the fourth communication. I haven't fully understood myself, how they, where they're at now, nothing so far. But I can try to provide as much information as I can to share that area with you. In case, then we can try to find out.
That will be open in the next meeting, because we know that there were many, many applications and very few grants, and I assume they just ran out of money. But how did they determine how it was going to be allocated would be good to know.
Listen to the council comments tonight if I have some more information. Stay tuned. All right, Anders.
Yeah, I just wanted to just make a summary of, so you're saying for Stormwater Improvement Project, we've got all the check valves installed except for 4th and 18th, or we have a backflow preventer, such is what we're doing. So, in summary.
And 4th, we stopped some of that 4th before this one.
And 18th are the only two that now are open. All others, in theory, we have our solution for, you know, I guess, it goes to work on the, it's not the right order, but we have it all determined. So, now we should be expecting, we'll watch how well it performs.
Right. Also, I want to get some more measurements on 9th and see if it moves at all, and make another attempt to see if I can prevent more backflow. When I feel like we got it to a point that we're stopping most of it or all of it, I have to probably get the camera one more time, just to kind of watch and see if we can just share the progress.
You're not quite ready to claim back victory except for 4th and 18th, or in the, I didn't.
I'm over the 50% where I feel like it's making impact and holding water back to at least prevent some of that instance flooding, but there's still improvements. We're going to get it all the way.
Okay. The bottom line, 7th and 8th, still want to flow more.
7th, it's the same system. We determined these repairs on the 8th Street pipes. I purchased a better quality plug to use on the 8th Street outfall, and we plugged that today. So, since this one is built, I feel like it's going to hold that water back, and we'll have a true understanding of how much water it is getting in to the 8th Street pipes if we cut off the outfall.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is even if you plug it 100%, the outflow of 7th and 8th is still going to be the same regardless because it's too low.
You're still going to run the same issue. Now, you might have a little more head pressure because we cut off the 8th Street outfall. What I want to do during the repair process, the hope is that the plug gets us to a point where we've alleviated the flooding that the residents are dealing with on a daily basis.
And when you cut off the 8th Street flow, 100%,
that's going to go south. So, it'll get a little more pressure on that valve. But when we were bearing, I still want Jim and I to plug your system, like the numbers of the system into the models, and then try to figure out where the best position for a valve, given what the system is designed right now.
So, if you put the outflow at 7th, that would give 7th and 8th plus resistance, three.
Yeah, but I want them to, they got to calculate how much decrease in elevation and how much pressure that's going to produce on those numbers.
Right now, the, I guess the question is, you're talking about preventing seawater from entering the street from 7th. Sunny day flood. In theory, we should have no sunny day flooding on 7th and 8th, presuming that flooding doesn't, you have to go over the, you know, the road.
Right. So, if the plug is working and what we, like the 7th Street valve is working, it'll be verified with a camera, and, you know, it's minimal. There's infiltration on the other sections of the 8th Street pipe, but it's groundwater. So, it can't be a large amount.
Yeah, it's not.
So, the idea is that we want to get to a point that it at least is preventing the backflow and not heavily flooding the streets, and then we can, you know, work on the repairs and see if there's a way we can improve that valve doing so.
If all these repairs were about backflow prevention, I feel like you accomplished that, and then you're the final, except for 4th and 18th.
Right. Yes.
Any other questions or comments for the City Manager? All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Reifler. Thank for that detailed report on all of our plumbing. Now, we're on to item number six, which is the City Clerk's report. Kathy, you're up.
I have my report included in the packet. We did have interviews for the administrative assistant, and we have hired someone to begin September 15, so we're looking forward to that. And the rest is pretty much just monthly regular work.
All right. Any questions or comments for the City Clerk? All right. Thank you very much, Kathy. Appreciate it. All right. Now, let's go to citizen comments. Any citizen would like to address the council, here we are. Just raise your hand, we have to be called. All right, I don't see any on that Zoom. I see nothing going on out in the field there in case citizen comments are now closed. All right, City Manager, follow up. Since there were no city, or no citizen comments, I would assume you have nothing else to say. All right. Now, we are on to the consent agenda, items nine and 10. This is for approval of the August 4, 2025 City Council meeting minutes and the August 25, 2025 City Council work session minutes. Do I have a motion to approve? Motion is made by Frank Baker. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is that Anders? Okay, I heard you over here. That's kind of cool. All right. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, the consent agenda passes. All right, now we are on to item 11, the regular agenda. This is for consideration of the application from Tim Holic to move from alternate member to full member of the Citizens Advisory Committee. Is Mr. Holic here?
I am.
All right, welcome. Would you like to come up and introduce yourself?
Sure.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Tim Holic. I live on 322 Bell Island. I've been here a resident of City Beller Beach for about three and a half years, working full-time in the area, and just looking at the team, what they can do to help out here in the city. I really enjoy it.
Nice to meet you again.
Thank you.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Holic before we go to citizen comments? No? All right. Well, I guess you're off the hook on that one. Thank you very much. Would any citizen like to comment on this appointment? All right, seeing as we have none, citizen comments are now closed. Counsel, I need a motion to approve Tim Holic as a full member of the Citizens Advisory Committee. Motion. Motion is made by Frank Baker. Do I have a second?
Second.
Who was that?
Jody.
Hey, hi, Jody. All right.
I moved around and confused you.
With a better microphone also. All right. Mr. Baker, do you have the floor? Never deny a volunteer. I do. All right. Well, do we have any other comments? No? All right. In that case, Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Frank Baker.
Yes.
Councilmember Kimberly Shaw Elliott.
Yes.
Councilmember Todd Harper.
Yes.
Councilmember Jody Shirley.
Aye.
Councilmember Anders Williams.
Yes.
Mayor Dave Gaddis.
Aye. And that makes it unanimous. Congratulations, Mr. Holic. Thank you for serving our city. We appreciate you not only being here tonight, but for all you do for our community. Thank you. All right. We are on to item 12. This is consideration of Resolution 2025-07. Zoe, would you please read the resolution and give a brief explanation?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Excuse me. Resolution 2025-07, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Beller Beach, Florida, authorizing signatures which are to appear for all city check and draft writing, instructing any financial institution to accept any certified copy of this resolution as evidence of legal authority over city financial accounts, resolving conflicts therewith, and establishing an effective date. In summary, this resolution updates those individuals authorized to sign checks and drafts filed by the city following changes in City Council membership and the appointment of new City Plurs since last year, 2024.
Thank you very much. All right. Any citizen like to comment on this resolution? All right, citizen comments are now closed. Counsel, I need a motion to approve Resolution 2025-07, authorizing signatures which are to appear for all city check and draft writing. Do I have a motion?
Zoe.
All right. I believe that was, was that Elliott? No, it's, I'm hearing, yeah, I'm hearing everything over here for some reason. All right. Shirley and Harper. Jody, you have the floor.
Yeah, just as a housekeeping item, I don't think it's doing that stuff. That's it.
Makes sense to me. Would anyone else like to comment? No? All right. In that case, Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Frank Baker.
Yes.
Councilmember Kimberly Shaw Elliott.
Yes.
Councilmember Todd Harper.
Yes.
Councilmember Jody Shirley.
Aye.
Councilmember Anders Williams.
Yes.
Mayor Dave Gaddis.
Yes. So, Resolution 2025-07 passes unanimously. We are on to item number 13. This is consideration of Resolution 2025-08. Zoe, you are up again.
Resolution 2025-08, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Beller Beach, Florida, establishing the final abnormal military rate for the fiscal year 2025 through 2026 for the City of Beller Beach, Florida at 2.0394 mils and establishing an effective date. This resolution forces statutory requirements to set abnormal military rate for the city. This is a, the resolution will not be adopted tonight. This is a first public hearing. This is a first public hearing to accept the proposed milage rate, and the final reading is going to be before September fifteenth, twenty twenty-five.
All right. Thank you very much. Would any citizen like to comment on this resolution? All right. It's back to the council now. Counsel, I need a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero eight, establishing the final adhorum milage rate at two dot zero three nine four mils for the fiscal year twenty twenty-five dash twenty twenty-six, with the understanding that we must vote on this again on the fifteenth of this month. Motion is made by Todd Harper. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Williams. Mr. Harper, you have the floor.
The council and the city have been on board with this budget, and the idea of maintaining a steady state milage rate is very important. What the council has proposed is balanced budget based on existing milage rates and our ability to look forward with our standard operating procedures.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Harper. Would anyone else like to comment on this resolution?
Yes. I live in Bel Air Beach, like everyone else here, but I live between First and Nineteenth Street, where we have three beach accesses. I moved here to get to the beach. It's the only reason I moved here. I could have bought a home in Margot, which would have been a plus with my tax knowledge rates and everything like that, would be a lot cheaper, but I don't have the same access to the beaches, people from Twentieth Street down. See, I get locked out. Last night, I was told eight-thirty at night, I got locked in. People were locked down. So, I think to the people from First to Nineteenth Streets, you get a reduction in their taxes and their milage rate. And I spoke to one of the deputies today, and he told me clearly, they've been instructed to lock the gates right after sunset and not reopen them until at least six AM. So, sunset gets shorter up until, what, December twentieth? So, we will have less than ten hours a day sometimes to get to the beach. Meanwhile, if I lived at Twentieth Street, I can go to the beach and Twenty-first Street going down, and I don't have a problem. So, I cannot support this budget or this milage rate.
All right. Thank you for your comment. Would anyone else have a comment or would like to speak? No? All right. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Frank Baker?
No.
Councilmember Kimberly Shaw Elliott?
Yes.
Councilmember Todd Harper?
Yes.
Councilmember Jody Shirley?
Aye.
Councilmember Under Swillings?
Yes.
Mayor Dave Gads?
Aye. So, the resolution passes five to one. All right. And we will do another reading of this on the fifteenth. I am obligated to read this. The proposed milage rate of two dot zero three nine four mils, which is higher than the rolled back rate by one point two nine percent, is the funding expenses of the general fund for fiscal year commencing October first, twenty twenty-five, and ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. The final approved milage rate for the city of Bel Air Beach will be presented at a second and final public hearing that will be held on Monday, September fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, at five oh five PM. All right. So, now, we are on to item number fourteen. This is consideration of resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero nine.
Resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero nine, a resolution of the city council of the city of Bel Air Beach, Florida, making appropriations for certain expenditures, expenses, capital improvements, and certain indebtedness of the city of Bel Air Beach, Florida, for the fiscal year beginning October first, twenty twenty-five, and ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-six, and establishing an effective date. Similar to the last item, this is necessary to establish the city budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-five through twenty twenty-six. And again, this is a first public hearing. The actual resolution will not be formally adopted and finalized tonight, but it will be, it will carry on through September fifteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Thank you very much. Would any citizen like to comment on this resolution? All right. Seeing as we have no takers, counsel, I'm going to need a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero nine, making appropriations for certain expenditures, expenses, capital improvements, and certain indebtedness of the city of Bel Air Beach, Florida, for the fiscal year beginning October first, twenty twenty-five, and ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. Do I have a motion?
Zoe.
Ms. Jody?
Jody.
All right. Thank you very much. Councilmember Shirley, do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Second by Councilmember Harper. Councilmember Shirley, you have the floor.
We've gone over this for the last three months. We've spent a lot of time planning. We've had our advisory committee go through it. They have a team of financial experts that have recommended foundations, and I think that we're out of way for it.
All right. Thank you for that comment. Other comments?
Yes. Same comment as before, till we receive equal protection of the entire city, I can't move forward.
All right. Thank you. Any other comments from the council? All right. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Frank Baker?
No.
Councilmember Kimberly Shaw Elliott?
Yes.
Councilmember Todd Harper?
Yes.
Councilmember Jody Shirley?
Aye.
Councilmember Under Swillings?
Yes.
Mayor Dave Gads?
Aye. So, resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero eight passes this round five to one. I am obligated to read this. The final approved budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six for the city of Bel Air Beach will be presented at a second and final public hearing that will be held at the community center on Monday, September fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, at five oh five PM. All right. Thank you for that. And now, we are on to unfinished business. Do you have any unfinished business? Not seeing any. All right. Next, we're up to city council comments. We begin tonight with Councilmember Bellings.
Actually, I have one.
All right. Next up is Councilmember Harper.
My only real comments are, as we, as we are continuing to recover from the storms of last season, just keep vigilance as we go into the next storm season, stock your waters, stock up your batteries, just be prepared and aware. But also, as a resident, be prepared and be aware that you have emergency pass opportunity. So, make sure you register with your city and be in access to the island in case of a storm.
All right. Councilmember Elliott?
With storm season, we are also at the beginning of what is predicted to be a very tough COVID and flu season. So, the new vaccines are out. I encourage everyone to get them and use them in accordance with your views and your physician's recommendations. Good luck to all.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Shirley?
I just want to thank Tim for stepping up. Appreciate your help. We certainly need some experts in the financial world. It would be good addition to the committee. Thank you. And Kyle, thanks for everything you do, and I know we've met some unconscious and, you know, staff and that sort of thing. If you, you know, need support or anything, don't hesitate to reach out to any of us for, you know, some advice or assistance. And that's really it. I just hope you have a great week, and I guess we'll be back here next week to vote on the budget.
All right. Thank you. All right. Councilmember Baker, you're up.
While I know in previous council sessions, I've been having many discussions with elevate Florida this year, actually, I had a nearly one and a half hour meeting with top officials and six others in July this year. Briefly, it was noted at that meeting, elevate Florida sought to lift between twenty-five hundred and three thousand homes in twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six. It was further noted that four hundred million was given from the Fed for this and another two hundred and fifty million various counties throughout Florida, or about six hundred and fifty million fund. To note, Pinellas County provided no fund. I asked, what was the criteria to be eligible for? And one was repetitive flooding of the home. I asked total history of the home. They said at this time, they're only looking at the past ten years. I further asked, what about flood zones? Was told that would surely be addressed along with a five-year elevation cert per applicant. I know that elevations don't change unless you have performed a letter of map review amendment, simply increasing landowner. I was asked, should I inform my constituents to get a new elevation cert if it's over the requirement? They was told, no, don't do that. If you're approved, they will do it, including the cost to elevate your home. It was also noted that all applicants of elevate Florida would receive a notice of their status of application in August, and that seemed to happen and most were denied. I then asked, after the denials came in, how many were approved out of the nearly twelve thousand applied, and what was the budget for elevate Florida and any vendors doing just the clerical work? While my request went silent for weeks, I did a write-to-know request with that to the director earlier this, late last month. In that response, two hundred and ninety-eight out of twelve thousand have been approved to go forward. They also noted, still looking at others to be elevated. So, if you take the two ninety-eight double it or come up with six hundred, and just use the six hundred million dollars, keep fifty million dollars for clerical purposes, you're now putting one million dollars per home to lift. An average home, twenty-two hundred to twenty-five hundred square feet, costs about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to lift, and that's turn, that's taking the garage, turning it into another, another room, closing in the bottom of the house and everything. So, my question is, where is the other six hundred and fifty thousand dollars going? And was this just another scam by the government, this elevate Florida? Was FEMA, was it a better action, like you went to your county or your city and your town, addressed an applicant to FEMA for a grant, wanted to go forward? That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. All right. Just to let everyone know that I watched a presentation today from attorney Jamie Allen Cole. He is the attorney who is, he spearheaded the Form Six lawsuit. He got that stopped, and he's also spearheading this SB one eighty combat. And I saw on the news this morning, the timing was sort of ironic. I saw that Manatee County, which I was not aware that counties were under the same restrictions, that that's just how overreaching that this bill is, that Manatee County signed on to join his lawsuit. Shortly after his presentation was over, a gentleman, I think his name is Max Singer, he did a presentation from the Florida League of Cities, and he said that the authors of SB one eighty have both admitted that, that they may have made some mistakes, and they're going to look into walking it back some. I don't think that they would walk it all back, but whenever you are imposing a law that makes you retroactively go backwards and remove, there's no grandfather there actually forcing municipalities to go backwards and change, change things. So, in our case, I think right now, the only thing that we've done under the guidance of Randy at the time was, he urged us not to make any more restrictive changes. So, we're not impacted by it, but had we made that one simple change, this is just how ridiculous it is, had we been allowed to go back and make that one simple change where we don't allow something that floats in your yard, such as pine bark, because we know it clogs up drains and causes flooding, we would now be required to walk it back. And the way that it works is if any homeowner decides to challenge us on it, it's a win for that person, because they don't have to reimburse anything. If they frivolous lawsuits and cost us money, there's no reimbursement for us if they think that it's, whether it's legitimate or not, the way that the law is written right now. Zoe, do you have anything to add about this?
I don't have anything worth adding other than what you mentioned somewhere, but I'm happy to make anything that council does.
No, it's fine. It's fine. I didn't know if it was a hot topic for you or not, but it is very unfair what they're doing, and it is probably, the way that Mr. Cole described it was it is the biggest infraction against our home rule since, like, the eighties. So, I'm hoping that they will realize their, their error and, and let us get on with the business of trying to improve our city instead of tying our hands, because as it stands right now, I don't think that we can make anything more restrictive in the community until, like, maybe twenty twenty-nine. And it was bad enough just waiting on the after effects of Irma, but, but now it's even worse. So, and there's, there's other things also that, that the bill did, which it just basically handed over a bunch of non restrictions to developers to, to build as they please without really any challenges. So, again, I'm constantly regretting about Tallahassee, and this is just another reason. These people are supposed to be our friends, and I'm just not seeing it right now. So, that's, that's my comments. Other than that, I can't believe we did another hour. I'm proud of this group. That's because we did our homework in advance and we had work sessions. So, thank you for all that, and if someone would like to entertain a motion, I knew that was coming. Who would like to make a second?
Second.
All right. What are we even giving a motion for, Mr. Baker?
Through adjournment.
Okay. Well, all in favor? Aye? Any opposed? All right. Good night, everyone. Thank you for being here. I appreciate it.